Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order. We have the prayer and the pledge by Councilwoman Deedee Reed Johnson.
We're going to say the Lord's Prayer. Amen, Father, Son, Holy Spirit, amen. Our Father who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us, and who is not in temptation, but that they rose from evil. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
No call.
Mayor Protim, Ricky Gosselin.
Present.
Councilmember Brooke Markott.
Here.
Councilmember Marlin Lewis. Councilmember David Broussard.
Here.
Councilmember Deidra Ledbetter.
Here.
Councilmember DeeDee Johnson-Reed.
Here.
Councilmember Dustin Swayr.
Here.
Item one.
Public comment. I don't have any cards.
Okay, no comment cards. This is the time I'll ask you to please put your phones on vibrate. And we'll move to item two A.
Acceptance of the minutes of June 1st, 2021, as published on June 11th, 2021.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mayor Protim Ricky Gosselin. Second by Councilwoman Deidra Ledbetter. Is there any discussion on our minutes? Hearing and seeing none, please vote your machines. Thank you. Item three A.
Public hearing on special ordinance 2020-2021-07, amending the budget to account for year-to-date variation in revenue and expenses.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Councilwoman, I'm not sure who it was. Councilwoman DeeDee Reed. And a second by Councilwoman Markott. Do we have any discussion on this audit?
So these, the additional revenue and expenses is just, just chowing up the budget for the expenses?
Yes.
Okay, cool.
No further questions?
So you go opening, are you opening, closing and all that?
Aw, man, you're right, I'm sorry. I need a motion to open our public, I'm gonna do it again. Motion to open our public hearing.
So moved.
Mayor Protim, thank you. Second. Councilwoman Markott. Anybody from the public have any comments? Hearing and seeing none, I need a motion to close our public.
So moved.
Mayor Protim.
Second.
Thank you. Councilwoman Markott, appreciate it. Item three B.
Public hearing on special ordinance 2020-2021-08, amending the budget to adjust to actual costs for Cliff Oakland Building remodel and roof replacement and Sloman Theater roof repair pursuant to bid process.
I need a motion to open our public hearing.
Motion.
Second.
Councilwoman Broussard. Councilwoman DeeDee Reed. Is there anyone here to comment on this item?
I did get one call, can I?
Oh, sure.
So I got a call about it today, and they were asking why we were working on the Sloman first before Weston Park and the City Park buildings.
Well, that's an easy one. The Weston Park and the City Park building are funded through the state, and that combined is about a million-dollar project. So we had to wait and go through the capital outlay system, if you will, and it's not quick. We got approval, and our architects are working on the plans. We're actually trying to do a really good job on those roofs, but at the same time, figure some clever ways to recoup some money so that we actually have some money to start beginning to work on the insides. We all realize those buildings are very dated. So that's coming. This was kind of another pot of money, and so not everything's gonna move at the same pace because we have a lot of projects. If you look at all the grants we're receiving, even the projects that you all doing, that we're just beginning of the $100,000 per did, they're all gonna go at a different pace. You know, the good news is they're coming.
Right.
And the good news is that we, as an administration, you as a council, realize we want to do these things. It's all positive stuff.
Right, absolutely.
So I just ask people to be a little patient. Like, I'm about to start talking about the new capital outlay, and when we get that, there's a half-million dollars to do more work at the parks. But that's gonna be another year from now, by the time it all shakes out. So one of the disadvantages is you tell people what's happening so they see momentum, so they see movement, so they see we care, and that our community's moving. But when you do that, then they think we're gonna get it really quick. So, you know, government, I'm trying to move it as fast as I can, just as you are too, but government moves pretty slow.
Yeah.
So that's kind of, it's just different pot of money, so it's on a different time scale. But the good news is we're not ignoring it.
Excellent, okay, alright.
Cool, anybody else? Then I would need a motion to close our public hearing.
Motion.
Motion by, I think it was Councilman Swayr this time, and Councilwoman Broussard. Thank you all very much. Madam Clerk, foray.
Resolution 2152, endorsing the application of restoration senior living of New Iberia for the Restoration Tax Abatement Program.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
So moved by Mayor Protim.
Second.
Ricky Gosselin, second. I don't know who got that one.
I was just lower.
Okay, it was Councilwoman Markott this time. Is there any discussion on this item?
So this is a eight-million-dollar project, and they're just gonna be improving the current building?
Yes, they're taking the current building and converting the current building, so it's kind of an adaptive reuse. So one reason why it's very expensive is that it's senior and it's living, people are there. But it's also a conversion of an existing building.
Okay, and my only other question was, do most of the local businesses know about this property tax abatement program? So that if they made some significant repairs to their properties, that they might have access to it?
We've had a few people do this, Community First, I think.
Right.
You know, we've had maybe one or two others. So you're right, we could get it out there as much as we can because we welcome the investment, and anything that we can do as a city to incentivize those investments, we want to do. So if the property fits the bill and can be done, you know, it's definitely worth a try. Because you figure between these tax abatements, between the ozone tax credits, between the economic development tax credits, between the historic district tax credits that are up to 40%, you know, we have a good incentive package.
Absolutely.
Anything we could do, maybe, maybe you bring up a good point that in all of my new marketing push, we ought to market that, you know, even more than we always do. But if you call and talk to Jane, or Jimmy, or myself, you know, we're quick to tell you about every developer we meet with. We're quick to say, you know, look at this incentive package, but I'm all for getting it out there.
Okay, excellent.
Anybody else? Then I would ask you to vote your machines. Thank you. For B.
Resolution 21-53, authorizing and directing the mayor to execute a certificate of substantial completion from Menville Lumber Company for Phase One of the Doc Vorey's Wing in George Rodriguez Park.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Reed and Councilwoman Ledbetter. Do we have any discussion on this item?
So everything's done but $3,244 worth of work?
Yes, yes. Our architect goes out and inspects and checks. He's in charge of the project, and goes through, puts a value next to any item that is outstanding, and, you know, they have a timeline to do it. And so I'm pretty confident on this, that, you know, I go to all of the site meetings and, you know, really involved, as is our architect, so I think it's all good.
Yeah, okay.
Anybody else?
When is it supposed to be complete? Do we have a timeframe?
That's a good question. No, the weather has held up, you know, we've had a ton of rain. This phase, you know, will be complete very quickly. It's just a punchless, but we're into the rest of the phase. So we have concrete parking going in. We, the landscaping's done at the park, and that's gonna get turned over to us. And I understand why, because they don't want to warranty those plants. We'll have to start making sure that the irrigation's working and watered. But there's concrete left to be, left to be done. There's, there's other work, you know, that's ongoing in the phase we're in now. And then with capital outlay, we'll go into another phase. So really, you know, it's, it's, it's a moving target. Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
Okay.
Correct, correct.
Okay, thank you.
And hopefully by the time this phase is over, we'll be ready to bid out the next phase, which is in our capital outlay this year. So I guess, yes, a phase will end, but you're gonna be seeing construction on that block for, you know, a while.
A long time, gotcha, okay.
It's a good problem to have. Anybody else? Then I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you. Resolution four C.
Resolution 21-54, accepting change order number two for the re-roofing of 911 Facility and Sloman Theater Project, and authorizing the mayor to execute any and all contracts in connection therewith.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Whoa, motion by Councilwoman Markott, and a second by Councilwoman Broussard. Is there any discussion on this item?
So Freddie.
Yes, sir.
So I know I spoke about the $10,000, so we're up to $28,000, now it's $30,000 in change orders on the total project?
So far, well, like this town, this $10,000.
And the 28?
Yeah.
And the 28?
Yes, the 28 was the interior finishes that we elected to do, which speeds up our meeting room, our training center that the city wants. It won't finish it, but it sped up, and while a contractor was there, it was more economical to, to let him do that. And then this $10,000, you know, this is gonna happen. It's an odd case that the manter of the building, where we removed the asbestos, and we are beginning to put metal there. It's made of a product called Tekton that was used in the 60s. It has no holding power, to put it simply. So if you screwed the metal to it, the first hurricane, you'd have no load, it would fly off the building. So we realize that, and it's odd because the roof deck is concrete. So it's kind of a weird building material that we didn't expect. So once you uncover that and see that, you gotta deal with it. So what we're doing is adding some steel. To penetrate that steel, that will be attached to the structure, and now those metal panels will be held on at the right load, the right wind resistance, those kind of things. So, you know, sometimes these things will catch us. We kind of plan for that in the budget, hope it doesn't happen. But it was a little unforeseen condition, but we have a good contractor who wants to do a conscientious job. And so when it was pointed out, I mean, the minute we saw it, we knew we had to deal with it. So Paul came up with a solution, and, you know, that's, that's what that's.
Excellent.
Anybody else? Then I would ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you. Alright, item five A.
Introduction of Ordinance 2021-11, and ordinance levying milages on the 2021 tax roll on all properties subject to taxation by the City of New Iberia, and to set for public hearing on July 6, 2021.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Swayr. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mayor Protim, Ricky Gosselin. Any discussion on this item?
So what's the change? No, I'm sorry, I didn't see.
Okay, yeah.
Go ahead, yeah.
So just, just to inform the public, based on what we have here, that we're just introducing this?
Yes.
So it does not mean we're raising?
Well, we're not.
Property taxes on people. I want that to be known before it goes out.
Our taxes will remain just like they are.
The numbers here are exactly the same as what they were before.
Correct. We're not, you know, we're not looking at making our taxes go up.
Thank you for clearing that up.
Yes, and I had planned that. I'm sure that was your question too, yeah, yeah. So we're taking the steps we need for our taxes to stay, you know, as they are.
Appreciate you.
Anybody else? Then I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you. Six A.
Special ordinance 2020-2021-07, amending the budget to account for year-to-date variation in revenue and expenses.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Markott, and a second by Councilwoman Ledbetter. Do we have any discussion?
I do have one question, though.
Sure.
Just because I haven't gone through the budget process with you all, I'm assuming that when we get to October 31st, any adjustments we made, we're gonna account for that in the next year's budget, like, we won't go lower. We will, well, I guess depending on the project, right?
Yeah, we could, we could go, you know, in other words, not everything rolls over. If a project is in motion and it's not finished, of course, that rolls over. If a project is finished, well, the budget will reflect, you know, before we finish, that, that item is zeroed out. We've spent that money.
Okay.
We do have a weird, Kevin and I were talking about it today, we do have a weird time that he has to certify that the numbers are within 5%. So at the end of the budget, you're scrambling to figure out what gets carried over to next year, how much do we need, what are we doing to justify and keep it within that 5% range? And that is, so, so you see everything that happened to understand if we're within that 5% because that's part of the audit.
Okay, so that's, that's really what I was trying to figure out, okay.
But at the end, everything, and the way we do it every two months that Kevin gets up and tells us about the budget, you're not lost in limbo waiting six months or a year to understand where we were. You, you know what departments went over, you know what projects went over, the ones that are completed.
Right.
So it's an ongoing process, like, we're starting next month to start working on next year's budget.
Right.
But that'll all get kind of, as we do the budget meetings and you're, get, get up to date on where we at, you'll be able to understand what, what happened.
Okay.
You know, because you don't want to get to the end and then realize that we went way over on something, or that we didn't, if we didn't do something, like, he's already asking me, sent me a note this morning, can you tell me what projects you don't think we'll get to this year that that money will carry over?
Right.
Because I don't want to lose anything.
No, absolutely, okay. I just want, I mean, I haven't been through the process with you all, so I'm comparing it to what I've done in the corporate world.
I understand.
Question about the copiers. You want to explain a few things about the copiers?
Yeah, didn't we have a professional serviceman on a copier, Kevin? Kevin, come on up.
Let me look, though. I apologize, I didn't bring the budget adjustments to me. Could you elaborate, what's the account number?
I just want to make sure, I'm pretty sure it is copier. See, we have cop machine maintenance, technical contract services, which is the copier.
This is for 10012?
Yes, sir.
That is for City Court pursuant to the agreement on the funding. I'm just redistributing some additional revenue that we have received from them, and then we pick up additional expenses.
Right, and then under expenses, I think we have a technical contract service? I think it's a copy machine, I thought.
Technical Contract Services, may I?
Yeah.
It's the first one?
Yeah, I just don't want to tell them the wrong thing. I thought that's what it was.
Yes, those items, because it's all kind of added to.
So 1210012010, that is City Court. So what happened is, is we had a meeting, and they were providing us with additional funds with the agreement that we would pay additional expenses for them. So what I'm doing is I'm picking up those additional revenue up on the top, and then I'm distributing, allocating that money to various expenses in this budget adjustment.
Forgot about that, yeah, because we met with them, and they actually found a ways to, a way to give us more money.
Okay.
They're gonna take it back, I'm sure, but it was a way to kind of revamp and update their budget. And I know, like, office supplies has been a big deal, and so they found a way to save in some other areas so they could buy more office supplies.
So on the, the 10019010, the Hopkins, is that, what is that? Hopkins, what is that? The account number, Technician Contract Services?
Well, I don't even have my paper in front of me anymore. I gave it to Kevin, Kevin, what is that?
I think it's for the Hopkins Street Economic Development.
What happened there is, is the money that we, we spent this year so far was actually the allocation we received prior year. So I had to make an adjustment to approach, appropriate expenses for this year's allocation that we received.
Okay, okay.
Okay, anybody else? Nothing further, then I would ask you to please vote your machines. Six B.
Special Ordinance 2020-2021-08, to amend the budget to adjust to actual costs for Cliff Oakland Building remodel and roof replacement and Sloman Theater roof repair pursuant to bid process.
So moved.
I have a motion. Motion by Mayor Protim, and a second by Councilwoman Ledbetter. Is there any discussion? Hearing seen none, please vote your machines. Thank you. Alright, item seven A.
Resolution number 21-55, a recommendation of approval to re-subdivide property located at 1823 East Main Street, New Iberia, Louisiana, consolidated into two lots as shown on a plat entitled, "Plat of Survey Showing Resubdivision of Property Owned by Jesse J. Boudreau and Cajun Mosquito Control LLC", by Leroy J. Gary Jr., Land Surveyor, dated 4/14/21, revised 5/27/21.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Broussard, do I have a second? Second by Councilwoman DeeDee Reed. Is there any discussion? Hearing seen none, please vote your machines. Thank you. Councilman's remarks, Dustin.
Yeah, one announcement, or one actually remarks on, I want to make some comments on what we had this weekend. Festival of Live Oaks was actually a success. We had a lot of people, it was very hot, that's for sure, but it was great. I enjoyed seeing a lot of the kids out there, and the families, enjoying what we've been doing. I think maybe the success this year from not having it last year, seeing more people out there. And we want to thank Heather and her crew. They were out there Friday, when I went out there Friday to put my rig, they were out there Friday really busting tail to get things ready for the next day. And the same thing the next, the Saturday, they were out there all day cleaning up and so forth. I want to thank everybody that attended, and everyone that helped and donated and so forth. And hopefully we'll make it better next year, so, thank you.
Thank you.
So I just want to let everybody know in District 5 that we're having a neighborhood association meeting this Thursday at 6 o'clock in Weston Park. And we're hoping to plan our very first project. So we're looking forward to as many people coming out to kind of work through the details of the project. And the only other thing I want to do is, I'd like to thank the New Iberia Police Department. I know they've been kind of having a rough month. We've had a lot of shootings and stuff going on, and they're working really hard to kind of get these things resolved. And just know that it's not going unnoticed. And, you know, I'm asking all the citizens to please continue to support them and share whatever information they know about any crime that's happening because that makes their job easier, and it makes all of us safer. So thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
I would like to take a moment to talk about Danny Finster, a young man who lived here and worked here as a reporter of the Daily Iberian in 2017 and 2018. Danny was drawn to New Iberia by his passion for uncovering truth and making it known. He often focused his writing on African American, on the African-American community, highlighting and accomplishments of its young people, and exploring the difficulties caused by racial strife and violence. Danny was recently working as the managing editor of Frontier Myanmar, an independent newspaper. The democratically-elected government of Myanmar was overthrown by the military in February. And in the months since, many activists and journalists have been detained by the government. Many have also been killed. On May 24th, Danny was at the airport on his way home to visit his family in Michigan when he was taken into custody by the military. He has now been, he has not been seen since. The US State Department has not been allowed to meet with him. So let's please keep Danny and his family in our thoughts and prayers. You can learn more about this by going to BringDannyHome.com. Myanmar, like they said, was overthrown on January 6th. It could have been the same way here in the United States. We just have to realize that the military, of course, wasn't involved in what happened on February, on January the 6th. But had they been, we could have been in the same fix as in Myanmar. So let us be thankful as Americans that our government wasn't overthrown. And the thing like with Danny, didn't happen to anybody here in the United States. So let's look out and preserve our democratic norms. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protim.
Yeah, just, just to reiterate, just, you know, we all need to stay tuned because there's some exciting times ahead of us in, out in the city. You know, being attuned to the state legislature that just ended, I think we're gonna be very excited when we hear the numbers that come out of capital outlay. We just think we can get most of what we requested if, if next eight days will tell us. But I think this council's gonna be very, very pleased. We worked hard, and Freddie worked hard, as well as myself. And I think that the good times are coming, just gotta keep working hard.
Thank you. Councilman Broussard.
Flag Day. Mr. Markott, it was very nice yesterday. Remember the flag always. Good to see. We got another grocery store maybe coming to fill up one of our white elephants, the whole stage building. We don't want to see them things just unoccupied, so I'm sure glad that it might bring some more taxes, and see what they have to offer. I hope that mayor and even the council, we show up at a parish meeting to convince them to help us on our one-way De La Salle, because they have little spots of parish-owned property. Parish, they're in the parish, call that donuts. They have to approve us putting the one-way on De La Salle to help Catholic. So I hope y'all, anybody who wants to show up at a meeting, we should support, help, our, our school a lot down there. So I'll be gone all next two meetings in July. Finally taking me a little vacation. So, hey, I wish y'all luck on what y'all do in the next two meetings.
We'll keep you posted.
You're not gonna show up Wednesday?
What, Wednesday?
What, you, you said next Wednesday? Show up at the meeting. You're on vacation, don't worry.
There's a meeting out there, it's okay.
It's alright, be good.
I'm gonna get me way off if y'all keep throwing that.
Councilwoman Markod.
District One, we're gonna have assert training on July 17th. Uh, Ms. Cheryl Sharamy is gonna put that on for us, as well as, uh, Reverend Zach Mitchell. It's, uh, from nine to one. We don't have a location yet, but as soon as we do, I'll announce that. It's free of charge, and that's just to train everyone who wants to attend. Uh, you're basically... The responders before the first responders get to an emergency situation, like hurricane situations, a hazmat if necessary, those kinds of things. Uh, I went to one of the trainings, and it was very interesting, so I want to do one for District One. Um, if you want to attend, just let me know, you could call, text, or email me, and I'll put you on the list. Uh, I did also participate at the Festival of Live Oaks, and my husband and one of our friends cooked, and they did very well. They got a first place and a third place, so we were pleased with that. And, uh, there was a lot of people there, it was a very good showing. So it was exciting to see something like that happen in New Iberia again, back to normal. Alright, and that's it.
Thank you. I don't have too many, I have one, though. I couldn't make Flag Day, of course Memorial Day was off the chart, you know, a few weeks ago. And I have some really good news, that, uh, we got all of the funding, and we will be ordering the full replica Liberty Bell this week.
Oh, that's awesome.
So, we had a private donor of ten thousand. Uh, Dustin used some of his hundred thousand, which the guy basically... I think he wants to remain anonymous, but we were twenty thousand short. He says, "You come up with ten, I'll come up with ten." So, we found ten. And then we...the veterans have sold quite a few bricks from that event. We've sold quite a few here, and then we had some other donations that, uh, came in from... We started making calls from my office, and so, anyway, we have enough money to, uh, order the bell, pay the deposit, pay for it when it comes in, as well as finish the kind of master plan that we had, some lighting, and a... Uh, we're looking at some rails at the steps, or maybe even possibly a...a handicap ramp, we're not sure yet. But, you know, just a few things in that area that we need to finish, because now people are utilizing it and coming to see, and looking at the bricks, and families are coming. So, I'm very excited about that, that finishes off something that the city could do for the whole parish. Something that was really neat, that, you know, we saw a need, and, uh, council stepped up, and we all got behind it. And so I think it's a very positive project, and, uh, those veterans, you know, uh, uh, made quite the sacrifice. So, anyway, I'm just excited about that, that's coming. Uh, other than that, uh, our next meeting is on July the 6th, and, uh, we still have properties for sale on Civic Source. Uh, I think you'll see over the next few months, we're beginning to take some steps to increase our housing stock, and, uh, we're even looking at some incentives possibly that we could entice people to do more residential development. Uh, we realize that, you know, on the business front, we're hitting that, we're doing pretty good with that, but we really need to kind of start working in our districts and working all through town to try to kind of shore up our housing stock and...and get some of those things, improvements in that quality of life for all of our citizens. So, that should be coming in the next few months. But for now, we got propertiesforsaleoncivicsource.com. Uh, with that, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Thank you all.